Looking at the clock.
Don't worry.
Meeting is in order. Sandra, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Siriyo.
Here.
Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Here.
Ms. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Flanagan.
Here.
And Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Any comments on the agenda?
As presented.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous vote. Comments and correspondence from citizens, visitors, and delegations in the audience on items not on the agenda.
Big crowd.
Have no visitors addressing items not on the agenda. Is there any unfinished business from last meeting?
New business, variance application BT 3979-2023 for commercial Yates LLC. Mr. Hopman?
Sure. I'll go briefly over this one. As you recall, we brought to you last month, I think, the Walmart variance request. For state code, the Planning Commission has the opportunity to review variance requests and provide recommendations to the Board of Zoning Appeals when they come forward. This particular one is to allow for ground level residential within the town's historic district. The building question is the Atlantic Union Bank building on the corner of Davis and Main Street. The applicant is proposing three to four residential units essentially on the backside of the building on what's called the ground level, so the level that is accessed from Davis and Main Streets around the corner, overlooking the parking lot and overlooking the alley. He's proposing to have residential units because essentially in those locations, it functions as an upper level and not the ground level of the building because of the topography of that particular site where it slopes down away from Davis and Main Streets. So, had a chance to look at the site this afternoon with some of the Board of Zoning Appeals members, they had a chance to review it. But that's the request coming from the applicant, so he's asking for a variance to that particular section of the zoning ordinance. It's in the historic district section of the zoning ordinance, but it prohibits residential units on the ground floor of a building that was not originally constructed for residential use. So, if that was originally a bank building, it is prohibited. He did previously contest the zoning administrator determination of that ground level interpretation. The Board of Zoning Appeals did uphold that determination. So, this is a different request, one that I think is actually probably a more appropriate way to look to accomplish the goal that he's seeking to achieve here. Happy to answer any questions the commission may have. You're under no obligation to provide a recommendation, but if you so choose, you may do so to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
So, this is an unusual item for us because we're neither deciding nor applying. As Sandra's explained, it's not so much a courtesy, but it adds one more sort of check and balance into the process and gives us a chance to represent the general public on the question of whether convenience, health, safety, or welfare are adversely affected by this variance. Jeffrey, were you about to say something?
Just trying to clarify my understanding. I know the building well. This is the West Davis Street entrance, so if I were to come in that entrance, it's the office adjacent to that or to the right-hand side?
So, essentially on West Davis Street, what's being proposed is that you come in, on the right-hand side would be an office, on the left-hand side would be the bank.
Okay.
You'd essentially go through a set of doors then into the residential component.
It looks like a lot of the entrances in the alley, the residential areas, is that not?
There's not entrances from the alleyway. There is an entrance to that lower level, which is office space from the parking lot.
It looks like some stairs here.
Yeah. I believe those are stairs down to the lower level. It's not to that.
Oh, okay. There's no door going in, so yeah, you're right. It's kind of hard to make those into commercial things.
The unit 102 and 103 that are contemplated for residential development?
102 and 103, yes, would be contemplated for residential. 101 is office space.
And the application says one office, four apartments.
We're working with him currently. He's in the process of, he needs to consolidate this site. It's multiple parcels in order to get the density. There's some discrepancy in terms of what the ultimate acreage would be because he contends that the alley alongside is actually part of his property, whereas we're currently showing that as town right-of-way. So, depending on what the acreage is, it'll either be three or four apartments. He may make one of the apartments a two-bedroom, one if he doesn't have enough acreage to be able to have that. But essentially, the variance request is to allow the residential units on that floor, not so much the number of units specifically.
Being in the historic district, he doesn't have to provide parking?
Not so much the historic district, but the parking overlay district.
Yeah.
Correct.
He's in both there.
And since, would there be sewer tap fees?
In this instance, there is existing capacity that's purchased for this building.
No.
No. So, there are no additional tap fees for these particular units.
It said the water is adequate, the sewer is adequate. There is a private parking lot.
Under fire safety, how is the air handling? It has an exit on either side, so if these did become residences, you can go left or right in the hallway to get out of the building?
There's the exit that you could go out to access to Davis Street, as well as the exit that you could go out to access Main Street.
Oh, so across the building?
Essentially, the hallway for the residences forms an L shape.
Okay. I see. So, it goes to that portico.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Gotcha.
Yep.
Got it.
Yeah, the access into the, there's a stairwell that goes downstairs and upstairs in that portico, and there's a doorway that would access there. And so, there's the exit at that location.
If we were to compare this to the Anne Wingfield building, which was not purposed to be a residential structure, but is, how would this be different?
To be honest, I'm not familiar with how the approvals went through for the Anne Wingfield project, so I can't really speak to that one. I apologize.
Well, it was commercial as a school, and now it's not. And we approved without much to do the additional apartments or units in the parking lot, which is residential on first and second floors, right?
Is it within the historic district? That may have, because what triggers this specifically is not the downtown, it's that it's within the historic district. It's that section that governs it. I'm just not sure off the top of my head, so I don't.
It is, because the historic district goes down to Spencer.
Right.
And it's right there in between.
So, this wouldn't be an anomaly. It wouldn't be the, right now, really Anne Wingfield is the anomaly, without just 30,000 feet.
Right. Yeah. I'd be careful about deciding as a president not knowing how it was approved.
Right.
It certainly could have been considered that way. As I said, just not knowing the history well enough, I don't want to speak without that information.
The only difference is, there's a lot of first-floor residential in the historic district, but this was originally designed as commercial. And we have that little caveat in there. But I'll tell you, those four, it'd be hard to make that make commercial and profitable.
Yeah, and just the location.
Yeah.
You can't attract any.
Sure. Nobody's going to go in there.
I suppose offices, but.
Andrew and I discussed this a little bit yesterday, and although where the contemplated residential development is, although it is on the ground floor, because there's only one ground floor, and it's determined by where I think the northwest corner of the building is, as the street falls away, it has a functional effect similar to that of a second floor. And the basis for the board approving the variance on that would be something along the lines of variance shall be granted if evidence shows that it's strictly application of the terms of the ordinance would unreasonably restrict the utilization of the property. And the point that it would be hard to make that work as a commercial area is a point in favor of, I would say, of granting the variance when the zoning board considers the matter under that condition, assuming that none of the four counter indications are met. And to my eye, none of them are.
Chairman, if that was the case, if that would, if we were to apply that broadly, any commercial entity that wasn't able to be rented because of viability of one way or another would then be eligible to be residential?
Maybe they'd make a strong case. I mean, I don't think any, I mean, there's, no pun intended, there's a concrete point that makes this unamenable, these units unamenable to commercial use. They're far from the street. Access is not convenient. And part of that is due to the unusual topography of that location where the street falls away at a grade. So, I don't think, ultimately, again, the decision rests with the joint board. But I don't see that these conditions, similar to these, would be automatically met for any arbitrary commercial property. And to the extent there is a valid point to be made by another owner, then it should be considered on its merits, seems to me.
It just seems that, you know, well, I can't rent it as commercial, so I'm going to make an apartment out of it.
Well.
In the simplest sense.
But if it function, okay, I mean, just devil's advocate here, if it functions, if it, because of the topography, it basically is above the street level, it's not at street level, then we have an abundance of second-story residential units in the commercial area. We have lots of bed and breakfast rooms downtown.
That's intentional. You want to have your mercantile and your commercial on the ground floor and?
And not to speak for the applicant, but if I were his advocate, I would be saying, this is analogous to that situation. It's just, you know, because the street separates from the level at which these units find themselves in the building, although technically it's still the ground floor functionally, it's the second floor. And it seems as though the governing ordinance makes specific provision for a situation like this. Again, the wording is unreasonably, it shall be granted if strict application of the ordinance would unreasonably restrict the utilization of the property. So, the question is, what is a reasonable restriction? And that's what the zoning board of appeals, the joint board is going to consider. I think when I read through this, it seems to me that where we really come in is there are five counter indications that would preclude granting of the variance, notwithstanding the clause I've read twice now. And one is the granting of the variance would not give substantial detriment to adjacent property and nearby properties in the proximate of that geographical area. So, we know, we're in touch with the town residents and citizenry. Have we heard anything? Do we know of anything? Do we have any inkling of something that whereby the development of these units as proposed would cause a detriment to an adjacent property, a property in activity, that the joint Board of Zoning Appeals might not know about unless we speak to that issue, unless we give them information that they otherwise don't have access to? Does that make sense?
I guess I, piggybacking on what Mr. Flanagan said, if we look at Wingfield as a example, not knowing all the approvals happened, it became an opportunity for more development there. And we talked about the topography here, and forgetting who owns the alley for a second, we could level that and make that ground floor entrances into this, you know, buy and build a deck or, you know, that goes out there. You could change a lot of things here. What if you wanted to go up in this building and over? Can't leave her over the top. Structurally, could it take that sort of weight? What happens if this becomes, you know, another story up where it's set back from the road and it's all apartments? We're walking into a space that has other possibilities. I mean, I can see this, you know, and look at it, and on the surface, it looks very reasonable that he's got three interior spaces, one that's towards the street that becomes an office. I just wanted to go cautiously enough to say, what other possibilities are we greenlighting in doing this? I know there will be other site-specific things, but just the topography of being on the second floor, you know, D5 and a couple tons of dirt and rock, we could change that.
Is that, yeah, okay. That's a good point. We should regard any variance with skepticism and be assured that there's no significant adverse effect. Sir, I'm sorry, John.
Could people drive down that alley?
I can't say definitively. I have not seen vehicles traversing there.
Parking, is it at the end of the alley, or you get there some other way?
The, I believe you enter off of the alley, and the parking lot is immediately adjacent to that initial entrance.
It's a very narrow exit onto West Davis, and there's a lot of marring on both buildings there of vehicles that have not done it well.
Yeah. It's almost like Coleman Alley there by the post office. You wouldn't, people drive through, but you, you know, you see the damage done.
You may want to drive quickly.
Yeah.
It's kind of like that, I think. But I've never seen anybody going through there. I walk through there all the time.
If I could make a couple of quick points, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
To speak to Mr. Mitchell's concerns, the one thing I will say is that what they're looking to do here is they would be maximizing their residential yield based on the zoning and the density for this property. So, I don't think there needs necessarily to be a concern with this property, at least of them looking to expand and see additional residential in the future because they will have maximized the potential yield. As the zoning administrator, I can only enforce what is written on the page with the zoning ordinance. That being said, as an individual, I can also look beyond that and try and understand the intent behind the ordinance. In my opinion, and again, this is my opinion, not what I can enforce, in my opinion, the way that the code was written, it was intended to avoid situations of putting residential development on floors in close proximity to pedestrians and people walking by in the street. So, you're not walking by on the sidewalk and looking into somebody's bedroom. Traditionally, for the residential ones, you have greater setbacks from the right-of-way and things like that. Commercial building is set up front. With what's being proposed here, again, my personal opinion, not what I can enforce, it appears that the intent of the ordinance to separate that residential from the ground floor, the ground-level interactions with the street, is still being met because of the topography of the sites. So, where they are proposing the residential uses on the ground level, as it's defined in our code, is set back and elevated above where those exterior to the building would be located. So.
Mr. Siriyo?
Has ARB looked at this at all?
It is not subject to ARB review because they're not proposing external changes to the structure.
Like if they were to start changing the outside and rearranging and configuring, doing some.
Doing what he wants to do.
Well, suggestion, yeah. And so, I mean, it's even so far-fetched as the town could release its easement on the alley if it is truly owned by the applicant, and that would create setbacks and opportunities to do more. So, there are other things that could be done, but does it meet the letter of, you know, the inconvenience to the applicant? Or are they being economically damaged?
And again, the Planning Commission is not being asked to weigh on the sort of criteria outlined within the variance. That's the obligation of the Board of Zoning Appeals to do. This is simply for you to look at within your perspective, your purview, from the land use within the town, and if you so choose, provide your input to the Board of Zoning Appeals. If it's something you have concerns about, it can be expressed. If it's something that you're not sure which way you want to go, there's also, it's perfectly acceptable not to weigh in in this instance. So, it's really.
I think it's a reasonable request to build the, because if you don't, the other use you have for it is nothing, really.
Well, listening to, I mean, as you say, the issue is reasonableness, and the amendments on the scale that Jeff was suggesting, I think there could be a debate about if that's a reasonable effort, you know, reasonable to expect the owner to take those measures before he or she can utilize this property. But what about just developing all three units as office, office space? That would be low input, would be reasonable. Why is that not a reasonable, why is that, why would that represent an unreasonable restriction on the utilization of the property?
It certainly could be done. And again, I can't speak to it definitively, but from anecdotally, what I've heard, there's very little demand for office space right now.
It's the market-driven thing.
Is the variance only required in the event, in order for the owner to develop these units as residential units, or is it also required if he or she, I assume it's he, Mr. Yates, I think, develops it as office space?
No, office space would be permitted. The variance is required for the residential use.
It's currently an office building, essentially.
So, he could revert it with no action?
Correct.
But it would be, then he couldn't go back to apartments. You couldn't go back and forth.
Correct. If he, essentially, he's required to establish the variance use within a set timeframe. Should he relinquish that use for a set period, he would lose the ability to continue it or to revert to it.
And where's the variance police on that timeframe and when did it happen? When was it not, no longer an apartment and converted back to a commercial?
Well, presumably, that would need to require a zoning permit through us because we would need to have a change of use come through our office. So, there would be another control mechanism, another review mechanism? Correct.
That probably would be ministerial, though.
The change of uses, yes.
Personally, I believe that the demand is for residential in the downtown area, and the demand is not for commercial in the downtown area. Just curious if this would create a trickle of a similar request in other buildings, simply because that's where the demand is.
John, just because we approve in one area doesn't mean we need to.
I understand that, but it could, like the accessory structures on East Street, you know, where do we say, no, you can't have another residence on your land because it's, because now it's impeding traffic, whereas the approval before, it wasn't. But then there's a trigger, and at some point, you're going to get to that trigger. If there isn't some system to it, then it can seem arbitrary and capricious. How we're going to grant you your variance, but we're not going to grant you your variance. It's got to be rooted in the language. Well, ultimately, it's the zoning, the joint board's responsibility.
You don't have to have a reason, right?
Yeah. What I'm asking myself is, what are the potential harms that could be caused by having people reside there? And the best I can come up with is comparing it to the other residential units off the ground floor that we have in the commercial district. The only thing I've heard so far that causes me a little concern is the issue with the alley and the parking. I don't quite, I can't see that in my mind's eye, so I don't understand how.
You said there's parking.
Significant that is.
Provided by the district. They have parking.
There is, the property does have a parking lot associated with it, but it is within our downtown parking exempt overlay.
Yeah, they're not required to provide any special parking for them.
Yeah, no, they're not required. They are.
It's also across the street from town parking lot.
Okay.
So, there's the opportunity to purchase town parking passes.
The second floor of this building has already been developed into apartments. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes. So, it's the combination of parcels five, six, seven, eight, nine. See, five is the parking lot. Existing private parking lot, and across the street is the West Culpepper Street lot.
What I feel like I'm hearing, so far as there's sympathy, sympathy is not the right word, but there's agreement that utilization, reasonable utilization of the property, given the topography and also current market conditions, would be to utilize it, to develop it as a residential property. And what I'm not hearing is a concrete objection in terms of harm to the community, adverse effects on health, convenience, safety, or welfare, particularly to the adjacent buildings or the buildings in the immediate area there. Does that seem like a reasonable summing up of discussion so far?
Positive attribute in having more residents there that directly talk to public safety, health, and welfare. These are eyes and ears on the street, do, at different hours of the days and nights. They're right there where two different bus lines intersect, so there's two different ways to get around without a vehicle, and you are close by a number of restaurants, services, and arts things. So, in terms of, you know, increasing density in that particular place, I see more positive things in it.
John is taking a deep dive.
Oh, no. I think it's a good idea, to tell you the truth.
And if they do short-term rentals, it contributes to the commercial activity in that part of town, which is beneficial overall. So, do we vote on this, or?
It's at the discretion of the commission. You may choose to vote and make a formal recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals, or you can let it stand, or it's, there's not a set process on this one.
All right. That's interesting.
May I make a motion?
Mr. Siriyo?
Yeah. On variance application BT 3979-2023, I'd like to make a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals that the request looks reasonable to us. I don't think we want to go any further than that.
I want to say that's reasonable. Sounds like I'm making fun of you. No, I, okay.
Yeah, I will second that for discussion purposes as well. I, you know, the facade's not changing. It's in, it's in the back, you know, alley area. It's space that is certainly going to answer a need for housing or short-term or whatever. Yeah, it's a special case. I don't see it happening, you know, along Davis Street at storefronts, and everybody's going to all of a sudden want to put residential there. This is in a weird spot that there's really nothing going on back there. And having, like Jeffrey said, having people in that area, I don't think is a detriment. I think it's an asset to have some people back there, so.
You have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Flanagan? I don't feel it's appropriate to selling the point of, or send a recommendation or for approval or denial to the Board of Zoning Appeals, basically throwing our weight one way or the other. We're just an advisory committee at this point, and we've reviewed it, and we don't see any.
see any issues that would affect the health, safety, and welfare of our people, our folks in the downtown area, and just leave it at that.
Saying it's reasonable, request is reasonable, suffice. That's what the motion is.
Or just maybe saying nothing at all indicates that we don't have any issue. If there was some heavy objection, then we might need a reason to make a motion.
Because we're not part, we're not part of that body, and, you know, there is a member of council sitting on that board is not.
The way the state code reads is that the Planning Commission may make a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
What about staff?
Staff do not make recommendations on variances.
We're getting, we're getting, we don't want to get the staff in trouble.
Well, no, I'm just, I mean, because things are brought to us with stack, staff recommends approval.
Again, we don't bring recommendations on discretionary cases. It's those that have ministerial approvals that we bring. Discretionary ones, it's up to commission, council, Board of Zoning Appeals to weigh the pros and cons, and we'll do our best to present those pros and cons, but we don't want to create a situation where there's a potential conflict between staff's recommendation and the ultimate decision.
We can say, we could say nothing, that seems viable. We could say reasonable, which is viable. We could say we see no deviation from the required standards for variances contained in section blah, 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 blah.
Yeah, there is a deviation from standards.
For the granting of the, for the granting of the variance?
Oh, oh, okay, sure.
Yeah.
Different standards.
Different standard.
We see no objection based on what's written here and what we know of the community. So, okay.
I just feel like we're sticking our foot in the door by sending a recommendation of approval, approval or denial. It's like we're standing up there in front of the podium, speaking to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and we're not.
Basically, if we stand silent, it implies, you know...
It's compliance.
We see, we see no objection, obviously.
So we'd have to withdraw a motion if so desired, or just vote no.
Or vote on it.
All right, the motion is, Mr. Sirianni, do you want to withdraw the motion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Is there, where do we go from here?
I think it's a culpeper business.
Okay, no other motions and no other votes. You should run for office, you're very persuasive, an effective speaker and orator.
Not at all.
In my opinion, both responses, either one would have been perfectly appropriate. Okay, moving on to other business, discussion of future training sessions.
Yeah, we had talked a little while back about some additional training. I had Jared take a look through the plan as a trainings, and wanted to share a couple in case there were some that the commission were interested in at some point. We still have our form-based code ones that we can go through, but here's, I wanted to share some other ones. If there is an interest on a work session day for us to do some training. So we, some of the topics include accessory dwelling units, exploring the regulation of short-term rental. Now, this is going to be from a national perspective and not the Virginia-specific perspective, and I've got a little, another update on that to follow. The high cost of minimum parking requirements, intro to planning, the comprehensive plan, thus following up the zoning ordinance update with the comp plan update. That one could be, could be of interest. There are several different options related to signage, legal issues and sign codes, or regulating electronic message centers, or defensible sign regulations. There's one on planning for the autonomous future, looking at autonomous vehicles, and what the potential implications of those could be. Zoning for incremental development, missing middle housing, meeting the growing demand for walkable urbanism. The YIMBY movement, as it's called now, the Yes in My Backyard movement, that's now starting to rise up, opportunities and challenges for planners with this. So these are just some of the examples. Again, if there are particular themes that the commission wishes to explore for these ones, we can certainly look to do it in one of those work session ones. Additionally, if there's other ones related specific to Virginia legislation or wanting staff-led trainings, I'm happy to do those either at the regular meetings or at the work session ones. So really, just looking for feedback and input from the commission on what you'd like to see on the training front.
On the, are there any on where we're going to put the town-sponsored fast chargers?
I don't know if there's trainings on those, but they're, I'm sure we can find some on electric vehicles and opportunities and challenges with them. We could certainly explore that.
There was a grant five years ago, four years ago, for what, two, two charging stations sponsored by a vehicle maker somewhere?
Tesla wanted to put some in.
We're exploring grants through Tesla currently to look to install some at the, at the new parking lot across from the depot.
I think we'd be very smart to get out in front on charging stations, tourist traffic.
We're certainly looking to have the infrastructure there. The difficulty is just how fast the technology is changing on these, and so the desire to make sure that what we're putting in isn't obsolete.
One other thing you may want to do, if you're going to have a charging station there, you should have a meter, so people have to pay in order to park in that spot. Otherwise, you're going to have people parking in the spot that don't have electric car, and they're sort of wasting it.
You can also put up a sign up in the Skyline Drive, they have, you know, where they have charging stations. It's just a sign that says, don't park here unless you're charging.
Or you could have a no-combustion engines.
Well, no, no. Because you have hybrids now that can be charged.
Oh, I know.
So that's combustion engine, or it has a combustion engine.
Yeah, that's the most expensive thing you could possibly do.
A lot of hybrid?
A plug-in hybrid.
Oh, yeah.
This is, this could be a really interesting conversation, but let's, I'm trying to stay on topic.
That's what happens when people read.
I, if the topics were put forward, I'd have two things. One, from the APA, Virginia APA, the autonomous vehicles, I came back, my mind's blown by what's happening in the Commonwealth with those, and what I see from that meeting coming in terms of autonomous vehicles, particularly in the delivery realm, and the needs for power to charge those when we get into personal. It would be fascinating to learn more on that and have our views on it. Where are we going to leverage town assets? The other one is the meeting, the demand for walkable. Culpepper is a walkable community in my mind's eye, and it only keeps getting better, that since I've been here, the connectivity, you're mentioning Rockwater, the sidewalk adjacent to that was a breakthrough to be able to connect the shopping area there. There's other opportunities where we've got residential on one side of the road, commercial on the other, and there's four lanes to get across. There's opportunities that we could look at connecting those, but more and more, I'm seeing people on scooters, walking, bicycles, e-bikes, and things of that nature, just connecting the community. It'd be nice to see what assets we have here that we might be able to look at just a little bit different and enhance them.
I imagine once we get the parking, once the parking lot gets built on the far side of the railroad tracks and the amphitheater and that development gets going, that will make a substantial contribution to the city. The idea of the city as a place where people walk from the town over to the entertainment to the park, walk back for evening meals, and so on, recreation.
I was going to, you know, it's a good list. I mean, anything on there is interesting. I was going to kind of defer to what you guys are seeing the most requests for, what are people, what are the trends now walking in the office saying that they want to do? Whether, you know, I know we've got the ADUs and, you know, I don't know what else people are looking at, but, you know, kind of what's affecting us here that we can get ahead of it? And maybe, maybe it's all of that, I mean, I don't know, but...
I think all of them are certainly things that we come across. It varies so much from individual site to individual site, as to what quirk is going to come up, what unique feature we're going to see there.
So we haven't had a big wave of accessory units. I mean, I know we've had a few, but it seems like, when I've heard that, that seems to be kind of the thing that, that...
Straits are high.
And it's confusing, too, because the state, you know, I know there was, there were some bills that were, I don't even know what the outcome of some of them were. I do, but I, you know.
Right, that's one of the other updates I'll have that we'll touch on, because it relates to short-term rentals at least.
Like everything you have on the list, can we, comprehensive plan is coming up pretty soon. You had something on the comprehensive plan. Maybe we can move that to number one. Just because we're going to be dealing with it pretty soon.
They have a refresher on that. Every few years, we got it.
It's been a while.
Yeah.
But everything looks good.
We're going to be reviewing the statute, the new statute in the not-too-distant future, right?
Which statute are you referring to? The zoning ordinance?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You'd think I'd know by now.
That thing keeps on happening.
I know, it's, we were, we were on the verge of rolling it out when I took a deep dive, look at it, and was concerned just about some of the complexities of certain aspects to it. So I'm trying to really simplify it and make sure that it is legible by the general public, because that's the whole, part of the intent of going to a form-based code, is that it's more...
I didn't mean to put too much, but I'm not trying to reach into the next topic.
It's one of those, again, I've been wanting to get, to get done, and it's just unfortunate.
Yeah, my question was going to be if there's a training module that, as the comp plan training would help us, or focus and be efficient when we review the comp plan, if there's something like that that would render us the same service, so that we can be very efficient in our review when it comes our turn to look through the zoning statute? Is there any training like that?
I mean, that's really the series that we, we're still, had been working our way through. We haven't revisited one of them in some time, just because we've had fairly full agendas, but we still had several more modules of that path that we can visit.
If there's any way that we could remotely access them, I know there's fiscal concerns on that, but with each of our schedules, I'm sure we can find the time, but finding all of us in the same room at the same time is harder. And I think there's a desire of everybody here to know these things, and I find them engaging. But if I could access that when I'm up at four in the morning, it'd be exciting.
That's the first thing I think of at four in the morning.
It is, you know? You wake up, and you say, man, I want to be a better planner.
Right after I wash my car. Yeah, it's difficult in that it's a subscription-based program, and so while we're able to do it through our ones, to grant individual ones gets a little costly. So we're certainly willing and able to host any time a commissioner wishes to come to the office and potentially partake in a training there. We can do it that way, but I don't know that we can, we can quite grant the individual access outside of that.
Like, maybe the idea of having one training session each work session.
We can certainly look at, to get back to that. We unfortunately, as I said, we, our agenda's picked up for a while, and so in the interest of time, the commission had started to sort of wave off some of the trainings, but happy to get back to looking to include them. And then again, it can always be discretionary on a, on a meeting-by-meeting basis, whether or not the commission wishes to partake in it or not, depending on how late whatever items run.
I agree with John personally on the comp plan training. That seems timely, right, you know, to put up front, given that that's a process we're going to be going through before too long. I also would love to do a little more form-based zoning, work on my chops where that goes. Some of the more forward-looking things, like autonomous futures, as a couple of the other commissioners have said, it's all, there's nothing that's not interesting and relevant on there. Seems like a question of sequencing it and working, integrating it with our other workflow. Does that, do you feel like you've heard enough here to give you some direction, or do you want us to?
No, again, I mean, what I've heard essentially is that there's probable support for a number of these, and just we can, we can, I mean, it can even be the case, though, where we make the call on the particular day as to which one, they're all relatively easily accessible, so it'll just take us a minute or two to access the particular one that we want to do. But we'll look to at least include on the agenda going forward for the work sessions, time for training, and then if, again, if the other contents of the meeting have it running a little bit long, and the commission doesn't want to partake that, that particular month, we can...
Is the work session next week going to be booked up, or should we militate in favor of one of the modules now?
I know we have the rezoning for the data center coming back. They want to discuss with the commission a little bit, little bit more before they get to the public hearing, their proposal. Off the top of my head, I'm not aware of any other...
We're waiting for a DQ letter for one project, but that hasn't...
The Montana self-storage one?
I believe so.
Okay.
It is not coming as of yet, and...
So again, we'll tentatively look to put a training on the, on the agenda. Again, if we...
Should we do like an informal, non-binding vote on what we'd like, if we have time to do a training?
Let them make the decision on what's on the agenda. I mean, we don't, in other words, if he can put it on and still not have the agenda too long.
No, no, I agree. But I'm just saying, whenever our next training session is, do we want to tell the department now today what we would like, our next, our first training session to be going forward?
Tell them. You're the chairman, tell them.
Well, we could, you know, some of them are fifteen minutes, some of them are thirty minutes, so maybe whatever just fits.
The only reason I'm backing off on it, do we do this every month? We don't need to. Whenever he sees a spot in the...
I completely agree. I just wanted to get some sense of what, what would be our first training priority? What would, next time we have an opportunity, whether it's this month or next month, what's the first module we want to, do we want to do some more form-based zone, zoning? Do we want to go to the comprehensive plan? Do you want to kind of branch out into something more forward-looking? And I don't want to arbitrarily speak for the commission, so...
But there are all different time limits on them, right?
They are, for the most part, as an overall average, they probably are approximately an hour in their entirety. However, they usually have the modules within them, so...
We can break them up.
Exactly, if we don't have...
Depending on how much time we may have available, you may, well, this one's going to be a half hour, so let's put that in there, because we got a half hour.
So you can call on audio.
Yeah, right.
And again, we, you know, we also can make that decision on the day itself.
Sure, oh, okay.
We don't have to specify what the training will be on specifically. We can, we can give ourselves that flexibility.
The masterful Sandra has it all at her fingertips. Right, good discussion, thank you.
I'm the concerning Netflix.
No sharing of passwords.
She's got it.
Item seven on the agenda, are there any follow-up items? I'm sorry, that's eight, not seven.
No follow-up items.
Item nine, Mr. Director, would you like to update us?
Two matters. One, as I mentioned, there was a short-term rental work group from the General Assembly that took place earlier today. They heard apparently a very, two speakers from the public, they took some information in. There's very little progress made on those specifically, so the next time those will be taken up again is August. So there's no new direction, given no indication of what, what they're going to be looking at in the new year as far as any potential new legislation. But I wanted to give you the updates, I know short-term rentals are of particular interest to the commission.
Is that town level or state level?
This is state level.
Yeah.
So that was the one item. The, the second item is that registration opened today for the Virginia chapter of the American Planning Association's annual conference. It's located, it's being hosted down in Roanoke this year, July 16th through 19th. And so there is a significant discount for planning commissioners, particularly registering early in the budget. I can... I can cover planning for your registration and probably travel there. I don't know that I unfortunately have enough budgeted to be able to cover room accommodations. So if you are interested, let me know, I'll be happy to get you the, the information.
What's the website? Because I'm sure they have an agenda on there, right?
We're finalizing the agenda currently.
Okay.
It should be up next week.
I can't emphasize how valuable it was. You were drinking from a fire hose there. Anywhere you looked, there was, you know, a group of people who were similarly interested in solving problems, sharing ideas. It was a great experience.
Very good.
Through it before.
Okay.
I had this sort of a re-energizing.
Yeah, I'm still energized.
This is not the training.
This is the conference.
This is the annual conference for, for the planners.
Oh, okay.
Across the state. We're trying to consciously also have a, as much as possible, sort of events and, and sessions geared towards planning commissioners as well. Just to, to try and increase the knowledge and awareness there, so.
It's been a long time since I've been to one.
Four-day conference?
The sessions themselves are two and a half. It, it's essentially, there's a reception on the Sunday night, there's some, some mobile tours on that, that Sunday beforehand as well. It's all day Monday, all day Tuesday, and half-day Wednesday.
And commissioners, can you elect to go out for one day or two days?
There, there are one-day registrations. Two days, at that stage, you, you may as well register for the whole. But as I said, there's a significantly discounted registration for planning commissioners.
But hotel accommodation, no?
Hotel, I, I, unfortunately, I don't have the budget to cover for that. But I certainly can do the, the registration and can do travel for commissioners for mileage.
I was able to find somebody who donated a space for lodging when I went. So, you know, I, I put it out there to Facebook and said, hey, I'd really like to do this, does anybody have a space? And they were kind enough to, and made it possible.
I'm very interested. I wanted to go last year and there was some reason I couldn't. And I'm pretty sure I'm done teaching by then for July, July, right?
Yes.
So I'm very interested and I'll try to follow up with you. When is the deadline for, to get the discount?
We've got time. It's, I believe July fifth is the, the cutoff for the early bird, so.
Yeah, I'll definitely look at the calendar.
We could, we could rent a bus and sing songs together. Sing a hundred bottles of beer on the road.
Just, if more than two of you are there, just don't chat town business.
That's right.
Voila, we'll take the VRE.
Okay, are there any other updates?
Those were the two items that, that I had.
Right, did the, next week, we'll look at the, the planner?
Yes, we'll bring that to the work session.
Item ten on the agenda, commission members' discussion. Is there any, any topics, hot topics?
The ordinance that came up about poultry, or is that the right word, or is it?
Fowl.
Fowl.
Okay, so the fowl ordinance that had its first reading in line for a second. I, I listened to that and I, I've seen the problems that people are talking about, that there are damages happening to people's property. There are fowl that aren't being kept properly. But the ordinance specifically restricts roosters. It doesn't do gender for quail or anything else, it's just roosters. There's a number of people who have roosters that are not being a nuisance. They're actually being an asset and keeping hawks out and other things. Is there any accommodation for that, or is that all for discussion at the reading?
It certainly could be brought up for discussion at the reading. Again, the traditional issue with roosters is the noise and the impact of the noise on it. If there's not complaints about the roosters, if there's not issues with it, they, they essentially should be grandfathered in. If there are new issues with the roosters, those are not necessarily grandfathered in. So essentially, if, if, if there are the new noise complaints, that would be the impact with the roosters. But if there, there are no issues and there are no complaints, there's nothing to enforce in that regard.
So the ordinance is, as Culpeper operates, is a complaint-based. So that we've got the situation now where property owners are receiving damage, they reached out to a neighbor that doesn't care what happens with their birds, and they're saying, deal with it. Now we put an ordinance in. And what happens then? This person complains again, that bird came over, did this. Complaint happens, we're going to dispatch a county or town employee, and they're going to go and do what? Say this is the ordinance and?
They'll make, well, essentially make sure that there is an awareness of the ordinance. If, if someone acknowledges that the birds are theirs, there are, are requirements in terms of what the accommodations for the bird are. They're, they are required to be enclosed in, in a fenced-in area, and enclosed on the property in the rear yard of, of the property. So if that's not being met, then they'll be required to, to, to meet that obligation. The issue is going to become, we don't have animal control officers. So if the birds are unclaimed, there's not really anything for us to do. The way this language is written, it's really about ensuring that the accommodations for the birds meet a certain standard.
I'm wondering, just could this be better done through education than an ordinance? And I, I don't know, but I mean, I chased a chicken this morning, I shared part of my bike ride with you. The other part was I chased a chicken up Mason Street. It was kind of surprised I was keeping up with it, but I don't know whose bird it was, I didn't recognize it from the other, literally fox. There are three within a block of my house that I'm aware of.
Lunch?
You know, I was, on the way.
Again, the feedback that's been received so far has overwhelmingly been supportive of the broader fowl one and looking to see the regulations to ensure that folks are keeping their birds on their property. It's those that are complaining about the birds running free and doing damage to, to neighboring properties.
And they can bring disease to them as well. I mean, so that you don't want to have random birds enter your flock. I get it, but it just seems, you know, the roosters being singled out and the idea that we're putting one more ordinance there. I don't know if there's a better way to say education. I don't know if there's state requirements for the care and keeping of, like maybe calves have to be in a southwest-facing enclosure. There's, you know, there's answers for those things that could be done through education.
Tried that. I mean, as long as I've been on the council, it's come up a few times. And most time, we did just sort of try to educate people and try to reiterate that, you know, everybody needs to be a, a good neighbor. And we've even had council members go out and help make fences and, because nobody really was thrilled about another ordinance. But at some point, when people keep coming back and they feel like you're not doing anything, or you're ignoring the problem, or there is, you know, damage being done. I think that's where we finally got to the point, we have to do something. And the county, you know, coincidentally was having kind of the same thing at the same time, so.
That pandemic dinosaurs, you know, is what happened. Then eggs went up, so, you know, it was kind of like, okay, now it's justifiable, you know?
Jeff, did you have some material from your trip to Tampa that was relevant?
I have photos that I, I will share with Mr. Hopewell. But it was, you know, I think that there's one, I always looking at development and what happens in other areas that I've not put together. But a trip to Tampa, by train from Tampa, we got to use the public transportation system there. They have a trolley that's free. It was really nice to connect different areas. That was really a neat feature. We saw Savannah and Raleigh and a little bit of Richmond on the way back up. But different things from pedestrian refuge to walkways to street signage. I mean, Tampa does a rather large job of painting intersections. And while it's not branded to a particular entity or business, it is a subtle nod to. Like there's an art center and they picked up one of the motifs in that structure and it's repeated in the pavement there. But I, I'd like to share those pictures with you. If we could share them with the rest of the group, is there just neat things that other communities are doing? And some of the other things that they haven't done well. At the end of Davis, we did a great job of getting those pin oaks some room for the roots. I saw other communities where they're just bending the sidewalks and you can't walk around them and they're gnarled roots and whatever. So some things where you can look at and say, hey, we're doing better than X community on this. But I'll be sharing those, I'll put them together.
Right. Last item on the agenda is adjournment.
That's your job, man.
Somebody else can do that, you know?